Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are live. This is the February 21st, 2023 meeting of the Milton Select Board. We'll call the meeting to order. It is being held at the Council on Aging and is a hybrid meeting, so we will have people participating through that medium as well. And those who wish to call in are reminded to please use pound six for raising their hand and then lowering their hand. And at this time, I would like, in calling the meeting to order, ask if we would all stand and do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is public comment. And you will recall that Select Board sets aside up to 15 minutes for the public, with each speaker having up to three minutes. And we appreciate the manner in which the citizens who wish to address the Select Board do so. I should note also that item number 13 on the agenda is going to be deferred, so that if somebody is waiting for that particular item, they will know it will be taken up at the next meeting of the Select Board, which will be on March 7. We will go into executive session later on in the agenda and then adjourn the Select Board meeting from executive session. Mr. Wells is unable to be with us this evening, so I wanted to mention that and bring that to everybody's attention. At this time, we will turn to item number four on our agenda, which is a public hearing, a request for transfer of liquor license number 00012-RS. Oh, yes, I didn't see anybody coming to the table for public comment if you had signed in with your name and address. So is there anybody for public comment? I didn't see anybody stand, so.
Nobody has raised their hands either.
So thank you. So we go to number four, which is a public hearing, request for transfer of liquor license number 00012-RS-0720, Abbey Park, 550 Adams Street, due to change in ownership interests. And Mr. Mullin, did you want to introduce this topic, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board will likely recall, a few weeks ago, we had this, a similar agenda item on an agenda previously. Unfortunately, the application materials that the town received had listed that this license would be transferred from one entity to another. So when the board held the public hearing and so voted to approve that transfer, it was incorrect. The request was actually to just have a change of ownership interest in the LLC behind this licensed entity. So we are revisiting the agenda item, but with this case, to approve a change in the liquor license reflecting the new ownership interests that Mr. Welch presented in our previous meeting. And I know, Mr. Chair, he is here. He's here again tonight.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mullin. At this time, the chair will declare that the public hearing is open and we offer an opportunity for this topic to be addressed. Mr. Mullin?
Mr. Welch, you can address the Select Board now.
Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to reiterate what we said last time, is that there's actually no change in the operations of the company. It's just a change, it's an internal transaction. And it's all the same members, all the same members that are at Novara are going to be the members at Abbey Park right now. That's the plan.
Thank you very kindly. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
None seen.
None seen. Are there any questions or comments from members of the Select Board? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
I will second that.
Second, Ms. Musto. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle? Yes, thank you. At this time, we will move to approve the transfer of the liquor license number 00012-RS-0720, requested by Welch Restaurant Management LLC. Is there a motion to do so, as read?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Kindly.
It is unanimous. Thank you very kindly.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome, Mr. Wells. Thank you for being with us.
All right, thank you.
Item number five on our agenda is discussion update and approval, annual town meeting warrant articles. And at this time, we have a warrant article from the Bylaw Review Committee regarding extension of the Bylaw Review Committee and an appropriation. Mr. Mullin, would you like to join us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Peter.
My name is Peter Mullin. I'm the chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. And my purpose for being here tonight is to go over the article that we've submitted for this year's annual town meeting. I know from having reviewed the video of your last meeting, or your February 7th meeting, that there was some concern with regard to the length of time the committee's spending its distance and also a concern about whether or not we should renew the appropriations for administrative services. Will you try and address both of those questions?
If you don't mind, I'd just like to start off with a little bit of background. I know we've been in existence a long time. The committee was voted in the May 2015 town meeting. However, I think we were in the process of changing moderators at the time. And we never, the members of the committee weren't actually appointed until the fall of 2016, about 15 months later. And that's when we began our work. When we first started, I think our second meeting, we met with the town clerk. And she informed us that she had been soliciting proposals from a codification firm by the name of General Code to create an electronic version of the town's bylaws. We had a presentation from General Code. And at the time, the planning board was willing to fund the cost of engaging General Code. And they were, the contract was signed the end of September, I believe, of 2017. And General Code has an elaborate process by which they codify towns' bylaws. That process involves turning in hard copies of all the existing bylaws to them, which the town clerk did. And then they go through something that they call, first, they do a, something called an organizational review. And that's just approving the index to the bylaws. Then they do something called editorial and legal analysis, where they ask you, they pose a lot of questions to you. And then finally, you get a draft of the bylaws and they ask you to comment and approve them or disapprove them. We didn't get a draft of the proposed bylaws until May of 2019. And since then, the Bylaw Review Committee has focused primarily on the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw, in terms of pages, our, all our bylaws are about 300 pages when you print them out. And I think 190 of those are the zoning bylaw. It's the biggest and it's the one, I think, that gets the most use. So we focused on the zoning bylaw. And after we received the draft of the bylaws, when General Code created their draft, they reorganized, changed the numbering. It's not a very intuitive system, but it's apparently a system that they use and it leaves a lot of numbers open for things that develop over the years. Since since we received the draft of the, from General Code, we've gone through the bylaws three times, the zoning bylaw. And we've had three different versions where we've given feedback to General Code. They've incorporated most of the feedback. And then they've come up with a new draft. So currently, we have a draft of the zoning bylaw that is now in their format. And it was published in March of 2022. And we had hoped to bring this version before the town meeting. We had a meeting with town council and town council told us that we would need to be able to explain and document all the changes that had been made between the existing zoning bylaw and the bylaw that we were proposing to enact, to replace it. And when, I don't know the name of the word processing system, but a word processing system was run against the two documents and it indicated that there were 7,000 changes. I think what that means, one of the things we concluded that that means is that if you change the spacing or the amount of indentation, or you make something bold, or you, you know, make any kind of minor changes like that, it counts as a change. So that what we had, we needed some other way to, our intent had been to make no substantive changes, to reorganize, to move things around, to put more headings into the zoning bylaw, but not to make any substantive changes. And so we were proposing that what we would do would be take the existing bylaw that's on the town, on the planning board's website and take all the amendments that had happened since then, type them up and have them adopted by town meeting as the current version of the bylaw. And then we would have a document that we could use for comparison purposes between the General Code version and what the current bylaws of the town were. Unbeknownst to us, that apparently didn't sit well with the building commissioner and the town clerk. And they prevailed upon the planning board to have General Code start from the beginning again and to redo what they'd done and come up with a version of the town's bylaws, both the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw, that was just taking the exact language that's there with absolutely no changes other than the numbering system. General Code insisted on the numbering system. I think they recently distributed that version, but it isn't clear that General Code has been successful in capturing everything in that. And so there's, I don't believe there'll be anything before the annual town meeting with regard to the zoning bylaws. Let me, let me say that we on the committee are not happy with how long it's taken to do this review. It's a big project and it's certainly one that hasn't attracted a lot of volunteers. But what we, there's 21 or 22 chapters to the bylaws. I think we've counted that there's about 35 stakeholders who have an interest in particular portions of the bylaws. One of the things that we've realized is that without secretarial support, we just can't keep track of everybody's comments with regard to a particular bylaw and various versions of the bylaw and the changes that have been made. When we were doing the zoning bylaw, we were able to get the assistance of the planning board's administrative assistant, Julia Getman, and she kept track of the versions for the various times that we made submissions to General Code. But we don't have that support available for the general bylaws. So in connection with the extended time period it's taken to get this far, in 2021, up through the beginning of 2022, I had a couple of family emergencies, one of them out of state and wasn't able to call committee meetings. And we had only a couple of meetings in 2020 because of the COVID. And I think we had only four meetings in 2021 because of my situation. Since May of 2022, we've had 10 meetings. We're, I think, making good progress, but we, more than ever, we realize we need an appropriation. I think you would have received today some, a document that's our appropriation request. And essentially, we're requesting a $5,730 appropriation, which would be for administrative assistance. And these are obviously estimates with regard to the time that would be involved, but we think we would need about 179 hours worth of assistance. In talking with Paige Appolito, I was told that it's possible that some of the existing administrative assistants that are working with some of the other committees may want additional hours and may be interested in working on the Bylaw Review Committee as well. But I was told that we currently pay $26,000, $26.97 an hour for administrative assistance. We've based our appropriation request on $30 per hour. I think that's basically where we are and I'd be open to any questions anybody has.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullin. Questions for Mr. Mullin, please?
I obviously have some.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mullin, thank you for being here this evening. I really appreciate it. There's so many points that I'd like to talk to you about. The first is, is that you said that nobody wants to volunteer for this committee. I publicly volunteered for this committee when it came up before the warrant committee and you had openings. This is something I do in my everyday life. I write policy, I look at policy. And that offer of my assistance was never taken into fruition. I applied and the moderator chose not to appoint me. That's his choice. That's fine. However, you had from 2015 to 2019, when we changed the actual charge of your bylaw or your board, to only work on the town's general bylaws. That's all you were supposed to be doing from 2015 to 2019. It wasn't until 2019 that we actually took out the part that you weren't supposed to be dealing with, anything that had to do with the planning board, with any stormwater. There's a whole list of bylaws that you were not supposed to be touching at all. And so I, my question to you is, what have you been doing from 2015 to 2019? Did you only do the planning board things because you were not appropriate to do that?
No, we've worked on the planning board thing since 2019.
Okay.
When we first got created,
Yep.
the committee was voted in 2015, but it didn't come into existence until the end of 2016.
Okay, so what happened from 16 to 19?
We essentially met with the clerk, found out that she was talking with this committee, this company that would codify things. We met with them. We reviewed the proposals that they submitted and the examples, thought it was a good idea, arranged to get the appropriation from the planning board.
But it shouldn't have come from the planning board because we were only dealing with the bylaws at that point. You were only charged to deal with the bylaws.
That is correct.
And so my concern is that, I believe that there was time spent doing planning board things with our planning bylaws, when it should not have been done during that time. So I guess, you know, you're coming to us today. Not only are you asking for an extension, but now you're asking for money. And I am, I have grave concerns, Mr. Chair. I have grave concerns about this. And I don't even know where to start because if we're going to put any money towards this, we should put it towards a nonpartisan company that can just review our bylaws and what's been voted into and get us something that is a final document. There should not be us worrying about commas. There should not be us worrying about all these things. These are things that a company can do. And if we're going to pay this kind of money, we should be putting it towards a company that is completely nonpartisan. This is what they do for a business. This, this, this committee has been here now for eight years, eight years. And we have seen no progress, except for in the planning board bylaws, which they weren't even, zoning bylaws, which they weren't even supposed to do until 2019. So I have grave concerns about this, this, this article coming before us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Other questions or comments for members of the Select Board? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mullin, for your willingness to undertake this. And I know it's been a long and arduous road for a lot of reasons. My question is, do you anticipate that the committee will be making substantive recommendations or just recommendations of form or both?
With regard, as I understand the charge, the charge is to review the bylaws and make proposals or suggestions for additions, deletions, or changes. And so I would expect, particularly with regard to the general bylaw, that we would be offering substantive suggestions. There are a lot of old things in the bylaws. I mean, it's, you're prohibited from riding a horse in the cemetery or from
I agree with that.
throwing coal ash in the street. I mean, I don't think we need those things and I think we'd be recommending getting rid of stuff like that.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And so is part of the challenge here, getting a level set of where the bylaws are now in terms of form? And if that's the case, is there an outside service that can help us do that? Get a level set of what the bylaws are and then, and then your committee can make your substantive recommendations as opposed to just doing the work? I'm trying to get a sense of whether this appropriation is to do the work on form or is to do the work on substance? Because I, frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming we can get a level set on where we are in terms of form and I'm quite interested in the substantive changes that you'd be recommending.
Mr. Chair, if I could just briefly, I just want to clarify kind of process-wise where things stand. So General Code has done their work that Mr. Mullin was alluding to, in which they've taken basically every bylaw that has been approved by town meeting and put it into a consolidated, digitized format. The town clerk has two warrant articles to, for the town meeting that are on the town meeting warrant. First one is dealing with the general bylaws, to take what General Code did, which was take everything as written, re-section, add some titles and put them in a format with typos and all, as they were approved by town meeting. They've done the same for the zoning bylaws and that. So both of those are prepared and are prepared for town meeting this May. The planning board has been, has received those. They're up on the town website for folks to review. So in terms of getting to kind of what you're saying, a new level set, that, that is underway. And if they move forward for May, they would be approved at May Town Meeting, assuming town meeting acts that way. So then the question is, where do we go from there? And I just want to mention that the planning board is interested in continuing into the next phase and they have asked for a supplemental budget request to fund that next phase where they take a deeper dive into the zoning bylaws explicitly from a planning board perspective to develop recommendations back for town meeting. They've asked for $40,000 as part of the town's budget, budget planning to acquire the services and work with a consultant to do that deep dive into the zoning bylaws, to modernize them, remove sections that should be, make sure everything kind of lines up with each other. So those are the, that's where we're at in terms of processes related to the bylaws and updates.
If I may, I, and thank you, that's very helpful. But it appears that this committee, the Bylaw Review Committee, is charged with doing that with respect to the planning, the zoning article as well. And so, so I guess we don't want committees working at cross purposes here, right? The planning board doing it and the bylaw committee doing it, so.
That is correct. Our original charge was to review all the bylaws with four exceptions. The zoning bylaw, the personnel administration, the wetlands and wastewater management. In 2019, town meeting lifted those restrictions and put all the bylaws. Our plan was that we weren't going to make substantive proposals to make any changes in the zoning bylaw. We have a planning board that can review the substantive zoning bylaw and advise the town meeting as to whether they think there should be any changes or not. With regard to all the other bylaws, there are stakeholders for each one of them. We are in the process of reaching out to those stakeholders, seeing what they think of those, are there things they want out, are there things they want in? And we would expect to create proposals. As I understand what General Code has done, they've attempted to take the existing bylaws and add all, I believe the clerk has, previously had not been willing to certify as being complete some of the zoning bylaws that existed prior to her becoming the clerk. I think she's changed her opinion with regard to that. And with regard to the, the general bylaws, you know, I, they've attempted to incorporate all the things that have been adopted since then. I've looked briefly at some of the, the recent submission from General Code. I don't believe they were successful in capturing everything without making any changes to it. I think there are some things that either were overlooked or weren't accurately incorporated.
Ms. Bradley?
So I had a follow-up question for Mr. Mullin on that. So the, the budget that has been asked, first, thank you for telling us that because I had no idea where we were at at all. The budget that came in for the zoning at 40K, would that be the same if we were to do that with the general bylaws?
I think it's a little bit more of a specific, I've seen this done before in other communities and that, that is similar to what I've seen other communities tackle when they're, when they're dealing with their zoning bylaws, to make those kinds of, a second phase of a recodification, if that's kind of the good way to describe it. I wouldn't know on, in terms of general bylaws, I think some of that stuff is specific to Milton. I think some of that stuff is specific to Milton, um, whereas zoning bylaws are typical, a little bit more, you might see more similarity across communities. But I could certainly ask, but I, I don't have an answer at this moment.
Right, and so, so I guess then it goes, Mr. Mullin, what you're trying to, to do right now is make changes about the horses in the cemetery, which, you know, if you wanna ride your horse in the cemetery, good luck trying to get it there. But, um, but you also wanna do things like change the name of Select Men to Select Board.
Correct.
So all those little things that we've done over the last ten years will be incorporated in what you, as a committee, will propose to us, or to the town.
To the Town Meeting.
To change, right, well, it has to go through us, but, so that, that's what you're looking to do.
Correct.
For five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars for, uh, administrative, uh, support, yes.
Right, okay.
I have a related question, if I may, um, Peter, do I understand correctly that the, uh, fifty-seven hundred plus dollars is exclusive to the general bylaws?
No, I think it would, um, uh, I, I, we'll have to see whether or not Town Meeting adopts what General Code has just created with regard to the, um, zoning bylaw. Um, it may not be adopted, um, and then there may be some additional work. This is just to keep track of various versions and, um, you know, uh, of the document.
So that would be inclusive of both general and zoning?
Yeah, I mean, the, the vast majority of work that we have left to do is with regard to, uh, the general bylaws. So that I expect the vast majority of it, but I, I wouldn't wanna rule out the possibility that something has to be done.
Good, thank you, that's very, very helpful. And, um, is, uh, a point about, um, extending the Bylaw Review Committee?
Uh, we, we would like an extension for two years till, uh, November of two thousand and, uh, twenty-five.
Okay, that answers my second question. Thank you. Mr. Zulus?
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, so I wanna go back to this idea of, of, of the bylaw committee doing the general bylaws and, 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 and the planning board hiring a consultant. And it says, um, consultant services to implement Phase Two of zoning recodification process, including updates to maintain consistency with state law, um, updating definitions, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I, I guess, I guess, Mr. Mullin, I'm, I'm wondering if that work is better with your committee than with the, the zoning board, since you're doing the work for every other bylaw in town? Whether, whether that should be with your committee rather than outsourcing that, if you will, to the, to the planning board?
I, I think it's better with the planning board.
Okay.
They work with the document all the time, um, they may have access to consultants that do this for them. As I understand what they're proposing to do is to make, um, substantive, um, policy-driven decisions about what the bylaws should or shouldn't be, and propose them to Town Meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that's very helpful. Any other questions? So we have a motion before us, and, um, in looking at it with modifications, I would, uh, offer to read it as follows. Move to approve the warrant article from the Bylaw Review Committee regarding extension of the Bylaw Review Committee to November two thousand and twenty-five, and an appropriation of five thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Does that encompass everything that has been in the discussion?
From the view of the committee, yes, it does, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to the effect of what has been read?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll, I'll second the motion, I, I have a, a further question as well, so.
Okay, so it's moved in second. No further discussion. Mrs. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, Mr. Mullin, we, we did have a discussion, a brief discussion in our last meeting, about whether it might make sense to have this board appoint some, uh, of the members, some or all of the members of this committee. And in light of what you said about the difficulty getting people, uh, involved, I wonder if you think that might be helpful? If this board were to take on the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, I wouldn't say the burden, would take on the responsibility of perhaps, uh, appointing some members of this committee? And whether that could be part of the article? Because if we're having difficulty, sometimes this board can, can move things forward and publicize things and try to get more people involved. And so I'm just wondering if you think that might be helpful?
I haven't really thought much about it. I mean, five people seems to be, um, a good-sized group to, to work on something. We have, um, five lawyers on the committee right now.
You need a paralegal, that's what you need.
Um, well, we, we're hoping to hire one.
I see that.
You know, um, in order to do that, it would seem like we would need to, um, have an article at Town Meeting to reconstitute the, uh, committee. We didn't feel the need for that. I mean, if, if you did, um, I think we'd, we'd need to do a, a, an additional article, or, or add something to the.
Or it could be part of this article.
Yeah.
So is there a specific recommendation to amend the motion?
Yeah, I would, I would make that unless Mr. Zulus wants to.
Well, go ahead, I'm not exactly sure what you're gonna.
I don't know what I would say, that isn't fun every night.
Well, that's what's something on the table, so we can discuss it.
So I would make a motion that, um, the Select Board should make, um, the appointments to the, um, Bylaw Committee moving forward, if it's to be reconstituted.
Okay, was this in the, I'm trying to follow the discussion in the context of additional members from five to X?
Same members, we would appoint them.
Okay, Mrs. Zulus?
My own, my thought is, is that, uh, the Select Board could, uh, appoint some of the members, maybe not all of the members, that the moderator does have.
Three.
Perhaps three or.
If we wanna keep it five?
Yeah, keep it at three, and perhaps the Select Board, uh, uh, appoint two or three, just to, again, if the, if the idea is it's difficult to get members, then maybe this board can go ahead and try to help, help get people involved and.
Rattle the bushes.
And, and diversify the membership a little bit. So, uh, so I'm, 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 this is in real time, I'm trying to.
Isn't it fun?
I guess, I guess what, what I would look for is, is a, is a, a recommendation from the, from the Bylaw Committee. Uh, and whether the Bylaw Committee thinks it would be useful to have the Select Board appoint some or all of the members of the, the, uh, the Bylaw Committee.
We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, um, so we can, uh, presumably we can take that up. We, um, and we can get back to you as to whether we think that's a good idea or a bad idea.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that feedback.
So, uh, are you suggesting then that we table this until?
If, if there's no downside to tabling it, to otherwise tabling it, that would be, I think that would be useful from my point of view.
To the March seventh meeting? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Um, I also would think it's important to talk with the moderator who does the appointments, because, you know, I'm not sure what, uh, the process in terms of how many, like, if he's having enough people apply or not. You know, we need to talk with the source, so I don't wanna second-guess what's happened or hasn't happened. And I think it's a little bit of an unfair, um, question to put on Mr. Mullin. I really do feel that we should ask the moderator about that.
Uh, but we would wanna have his input as well.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I think that we also should ask the moderator.
And I, I concur, and that's one of the advantages of deferring this until the March seventh meeting. So thank you for that, very much.
And I, and I would say, just, just for the discussion in the committee, uh, it is a good point, uh, that Ms. Musto raises, that we don't know about the moderator's appointments. We don't know how it's done, we don't know how many, but when we make appointments, it's all public.
It is public.
Everybody knows who's applying and who's not applying, and, and, uh, and who's being considered or not. And so, so in terms of transparency, it seems to me there might be some benefit to this board having some say in the, uh, in the appointment.
Ms. Musto?
Yes, um, I would like to add that, Mike, we didn't have that transparency until we started listing everybody that was applying for positions. So when people applied for certain committees, we never used to list their names until I think Ms. Bradley and I became on, became on the board. So, um, up to that point, that wasn't happening.
No, it's actually, it's actually not the case. Uh, we were in prior, in prior boards, we listed the names at the instruction of Town Council, or we delegated it to one, uh, as we still can, to one member of the board to provide a slate in all of those names, all of the names were listed on the public announcement. So that's not something, that's something that predates your, uh, service on the board and Ms. Bradley's service on the board. And you can go back and look at agendas from two thousand and twenty and two thousand and nineteen, and you can see that that was the case back then, and it will continue to be the case, 'cause that's what the law is.
I was just gonna say that, as I recall, it usually was somebody was, um, presented, somebody, a member of the board would have a slate, and they would choose from there.
It was done sometimes, yeah, that.
I saw that more often, but anyways, going forward.
Two options, right?
Yes, yes, exactly, thank you.
Okay, so do we need a motion to table?
I think you can just withdraw the motion.
In that case?
Make the motion.
Ms. Musto make the motion, right. Do you wanna withdraw?
I will withdraw, sure.
Okay, thank you. And the second withdraws?
Sure.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Mullin, um, thank you for being with us. I hope, uh, we're moving forward on a timely basis, and we look forward to the results of your discussion tomorrow night. Uh, can you, uh, communicate those to?
Uh, communicate it with the Town Administrator.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Much appreciated. At this time, uh, item five B is to open the annual Town Meeting warrant. Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make the motion to open up the warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Moved in seconded. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of opening?
Aye.
Thank you. And at this time, warrant article to authorize the Select Board to sell a Kitter Branch Library located at one oh one Blue Hill Parkway.
Do we need a motion?
Is there a motion, please?
Sorry. Um, I make a motion, I, I don't have the motion things up on my.
Want me to read it for you?
Please, if you could read it for me.
Move to approve the warrant article to authorize the Select Board to sell a Kitter Branch Library located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway.
I make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Next item is, uh, to close the annual Town Meeting warrant. Is there a motion to close the warrant, please?
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Musto, second. Ms. Bradley, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of closing the warrant? It is unanimous. Item number six, uh, discussion approval, policies and decorum at public meetings. This would be, uh, the first reading. And there are two parts to this, uh, A and B. Everybody, um, and I'm sorry about getting this out a little later than had, uh, planned. This is a follow-up for what was introduced at the February, um, thirteenth, uh, meeting of the Select Board, just before the special Town Meeting. There's a bit of a introductory preamble that'll take the liberty of reading, uh, for the public. Uh, Milton's Town Government Meetings are meant to be places where we can gather together and engage in the democratic process. No one should feel unwelcome or be reluctant to share their opinion because of how others might react, or be made to feel fearful for expressing their position in a public forum. Below is a draft policy statement to be added to the public participation in Select Board Meetings page in the Select Board Policies and Procedural Manual adopted on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. This proposed addition was introduced at the Select Board Meeting on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Select Board Meeting in February twenty-one, twenty-three, tonight, will constitute its first reading. A second reading and adoption will be scheduled at the March seventh Select Board Meeting. Reading has been reviewed by Town Council in conjunction with the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I will read the statement for the Select Board Policy. No person shall address a meeting of the Select Board without permission of the Chair of the Select Board, and all other persons shall, at the Chair's request, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a Select Board meeting. If anyone does, and after clear warning from the Chair, any person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. So that's the reading for six A with respect to Select Board. Any comment or discussion? Again, this is, uh, recast of exactly what was presented at the February thirteenth meeting. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a, a question at the top of this. It's titled, uh, Decorum at Select Board in Other Town of Milton Government Meetings?
That's the general heading for?
Yeah.
The totality of number six. Um, this is only one half of that.
So I'm wondering, um, if it's possible for us to extend this decorum to all town buildings? Or town meetings held in public buildings? Um, because right now, we are only addressing what happens at a Select Board. And that does not include what happens at, at the Council on Aging, um, public meetings, or any other public meeting. It's my understanding that we have a duty as the, you know, body that oversees things that happen in our buildings, to ensure that people are safe at all meetings.
Okay, my mind is saying, and.
Yeah?
I beg your intelligence with the, my mind is saying that we may have a C. A pertaining to the Select Board Policies Manual. B, a recommendation that would pertain to all town government, all, all other town government meetings. An umbrella. And then C, something that would pertain to meetings held in public buildings of the Town of Milton.
Yes.
And having affirmation of that, would you be willing to draft that? Thank you, and we could bring it back to the table?
Yes, that sounds great.
At the meeting on March seventh. Thank you for offering to do that, and seeing that distinction. Ms. Musto?
Yes, I just have another question, um.
Certainly.
I wanna make sure that that also encompasses, um, elected officials, so that all of us have the same, um, expectations and decorum of one another, as well as any elected official.
Can you elaborate a little further for me, in how you would, where you would want? Might that be in the general statement for all, uh, boards and committees in town government?
And elected officials, because I mean, I think that if we're asking, you know, everybody that's, comes to a meeting as a resident, anybody that's, um, on a committee, that should also apply to us as any, or any other elected boards or committees. So I just wanna make sure it's covered in it, that's all.
Right, what, that's a good point. And what I'm, uh, sort of asking, suggesting is, might that fall under, uh, six B, uh, B, which would be the more generic paragraph, which we'll get to next?
Okay.
Okay, whereas we have this reading as the first reading for the Select Board Policy. So I'll ask if there's any further comment on the proposed Select Board Policy. Seeing none, then we will have a second reading at our March seventh meeting. Now we will go to, uh, six B, and I'll read the preparatory comments on that. The Select Board asks and expects that all Milton Town Government Meetings, including those of any elected or appointed board or committee, will be held with decorum in propriety, and constructive in collaborative fashion. A paralleling proposed statement for all other meetings appears below for discussion, afterwards it will be forwarded to the Town Moderator for review and comment, respecting the moderator's board and committee appointment authority. So. So, to the question that Ms. Musto raised a moment ago, might a phrase be added to the following? No person shall address a board or committee meeting without permission of its chair, and all other persons shall, at the chair's request, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a board or committee meeting. If anyone does, and after clear warning from the chair, any person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. So, then is there another sentence that you wish to add that would address the point that you have in mind?
I haven't thought of the wording for it yet, but.
Okay, but we can do so at, at the March seventh meeting? Which would probably be its first read. And if it's agreeable to everybody, I will send this to the moderator for his input. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so the moderator does appoint boards and committees, but there are other committees that appoint committees in town. It's not just the moderator. It's the, the school committee appoints subcommittees. There are other committees in town that appoint their members to different committees, whether it be the, the library trustees or the park commissioners. So there, so it's not just the moderator that, that has appointment authority. So, and, and I, I was also curious as to what the distinction between the B and the proposed C would be, which was, you know, our authority to, to set a policy for public meetings. So, in, for meetings in public buildings. So, so I think it's a good idea to get feedback and input from the moderator, but I think it's also a good idea to get feedback and moderator, feedback and, feedback from other boards and other appointing authorities in town. And take their feedback, and then ultimately, if, if it's this board that decides what happens in public be, public buildings, then it seems to me we can, we can make a judgment based on the feedback that we, so, so this is my, my two questions, yeah.
Well, taken. And it would be very easy to additionally distribute this to other boards, such as the board of trustees for the Milton Public Libraries, and get their input as well. Ms. Musto?
I think once we have.
Board of health.
Yes. I also think that once we have everything back, that we should have Kevin Frytag get his opinion on it.
We definitely would.
Okay.
Yep, just as we did with what we have for the select board, yeah. Thank you. That's very helpful. Any further comment, question? Seeing none, let us move. Do we need to have a motion for the second reading? I don't recall that we have in the past.
Yeah, I think so.
No, okay. Item number seven, discussion update approval, select board committee review process of volunteer appointments to boards and committees. And I'll turn to Erin and Roxanne at this point in time. We know you have had work in progress. We had planned to have it on tonight's agenda, the last meeting of the month of February. So, could you give us an update and help us look at what we would have as next steps? And I have a couple of suggestions that I'd like to share with you as well. Anybody would like to start?
I'm ready. Me? Yeah. So, um.
Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'm really sorry that we don't have something for you this evening and for the board, is how I'm gonna start this.
Well, I didn't expect the final product, but wanted to have an, an update so we have an idea of exactly where we need to be going and by when.
Yeah. Member Musto and I, I believe, have made great progress with the help of the town administrator and the staff of the select board and other folks on the current committees and where they stand. Ms. Musto's determination to make sure that we have a charge and the, the people on the committee and the dates that they were appointed are all something that is supported, I think, across the board. We, as you know, are in the midst of redesigning our website, which, again, kudos to Mr. Milano for getting that grant. As he said to us, it's easier to make changes now and then upload it as a new thing. It's my understanding that we will come to the select board with a list of committees that we are hoping to archive? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, yep. So, so we will present to the select board a list of committees that we are hoping to archive, which means that they are done with their, their charge?
Okay, in my mind, I just wanted to clarify, archive is equivalent to sunsetting.
Um, yep, so they are already sunsetted, many of them have, but they're still
Lit, posted.
Active on our front page, which makes it look like we have ninety-two committees, which we don't.
Great. That would be very helpful to everybody.
So, there will be a page, I believe, and I'm looking at Mr. Milano right now, because he's working with Rob, that will put, they're not going away. So if somebody ever had a question about them, they can click on that link and find them, and they're minutes there, correct?
Right, the intention is to keep boards and committees that maybe are no longer active set up so that if they became active for some reason, we could regenerate them pretty quickly, but also to retain that historical information that we do have and do need to keep, anyway.
Right.
But as a subset and not incorporated into the main body?
Correct.
Of boards and committees, correct?
Correct. We also went through, there's a couple of committees that are listed that are one person, that aren't even appointed by us, or anybody in town. So we're gonna move those, so we're gonna, we're gonna propose that we move some things around, so to make it cleaner for what it looks like. That was one part of our charge. The second part, I, I believed, and that was my undertaking, was that we would come up with a handbook for all boards and committees to follow. When I was in the warrant committee, I worked, and she's probably gonna hate me, but Kathy Cassis, who lives over in East Milton, I'm sure you know her, Mr. Chair. She's a wonderful woman who was great on the warrant committee with me. We were complete opposites, but we found a wonderful friendship with each other in that our love for policy and understanding things. Nowhere in Milton is there a place to go to look up something if you're on a committee. There's not a reference guide. There's not a general place where somebody can go to answer a question. So, in my conversations with Kathy and others, I, I thought that that was the intention of this subcommittee was to come up with this. I took what was already invented, because why would we reinvent the wheel? And mushed together a bunch of different towns' things into a forty-two page document, which is very long. I understand that, it's long for a lot of people, not for me. I read hundreds of pages on the weekend now. But, it's, it's a long document. My intention was for it to be used as a reference piece. My intention was for it to be used as kind of a standard for all boards and committees in the town. I also recreated the application process so that the application in and of itself was standardized for all committees, because right now it's not. It's not, there is no open way of understanding how people apply to things. There's no understanding of what the process is. And that's fine, because some people have the right to appoint to committees on their own, like the planning committee, the planning board, the town moderator. However, what I tried to do was say that everybody had to apply the same way. So they all had to do the same application, no matter what committee you were applying for. To be honest with you, Mr. Chair, I put a lot of work into this. And, and I understand making edits and making concessions. Trust me, that's why I made it forty-two pages, because I knew we were gonna cut a lot of it. It's not my first rodeo. But I think that I am at an impasse with the committee at this point. Because from what I gather, and this is just from what I gather, and so Ms. Musto, member Musto can make her own declarations, but it's my understanding that she would like a two-page or three-page document that linked to things. And that was not my intent from the beginning. I don't believe that our town has a standardized way of doing our boards and committees. I don't believe that many of our volunteers understand what it means to be on a boarding committee. I don't think that they understand that if there's a tie vote, what does that mean, without calling up Kevin Frytag? And guess what? They can't call him up all the time. So I tried to create a document that would encompass all of these questions so that members of the town felt like they had the knowledge they needed to be on a boarding committee. At this point, I, it has been an editable document. We've invited the town moderator multiple times to come to mid, to our meetings. He has had schedule conflicts, which I completely understand. The town clerk has attended multiple meetings of ours and has given suggestions. She also likes the two-page thing as the kind of, here's a handout of a two-page, but really likes the idea of having something that is a lot larger and that explains things that people can use as an encyclopedia. I know that word is foreign to a lot of us here today. It's not Google, it's an encyclopedia. And that's all it was intended to do. So, at this point, Mr. Chair, my goal all along was to get this board something by the end of February, like you, you and all of us had agreed to. I drafted this in December. We have had two meetings on it thus far. And I welcome the committee's opinion about where we should go from here, because we are, it's an editable, editable document, so I've given Ms. Musto, member Musto, the opportunity to create whatever she wanted, along with Mr. Milano, Lynn, there's a whole group of people that are on this email that, to make sure that they can read it and they can make suggestions, so that we ensure that what comes back to the board is what is intended by the folks that are doing the job, because I'm not doing that job. And that's where we are from my point of view.
Okay. Ms. Musto, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, to first start, a lot of the beginning part is true. We've worked with Mr. Milano in looking at every single committee, making sure that we have all the information so if we're gonna archive anything or sunset it, that we have, you know, the, the past minutes, the past agendas, and so forth. And I know that he's still chasing a bunch of committees down, and hopefully we will have that information, because I think that's really relevant. As far as timetable, I know that was brought up at one point to have some kind of a handbook done by mid-February. I prefer to have something done that's a great product. I don't want to have a product that's not a great product and have to come back two or three months later to re-edit it. So I think it should be a very good product that we can both collaborate on and work on. As far as the process, I'm really big on the process. And I think that I had said that the two or three-page outline that, for instance, the town of Canton uses, I thought it was a very good product, because it would be good for people that want some quick information that has links to, you know, open meeting law and ethics and all sorts of things. As far as the everyday part of a committee, if you have a tie vote and things like that, yes, you would need a general handbook for that. But that takes some time to generate. As Erin pointed out, or Ms. Bradley pointed out, that there was a handbook that was sort of put together, but it was mashed up with a bunch of different towns. So there were a lot of terms in it that were incorrect. For instance, calling a town manager, we have a town administrator. There was a lot of references to, you know, Bob Hisse's role as well, as a town moderator. And our job is for the town committee. So, I think, my hope was that if we could put together a nice product, we could go, like with, with the town clerk, because she has a lot of input as to what she would like to see in this as well, that we could do a nice product and have the town moderator look at this product and either take parts of it, or maybe take the whole piece of it and use that process. But, you know, our role is for the select board committees. That's what our title is. And I felt that, that's where I think we had a little bit of a disagreement, because I felt that we need to stay in our lane. And certainly we can reach out to, you know, the town moderator, but that is an elected position. It's a little bit different than what comes under our boards and committees. The other thing is, at our last meeting when we met, you know, I'm committed to working with Ms. Bradley, and I know that in the past, Ms. Bradley has said that she's willing to work together. And in the past, that you've worked across the aisle in, in your previous Johnson State Government and collaborated and compromised. And that's what I would like to see done. At our last meeting, unfortunately, Ms. Bradley got up and left and said that she needed to get away from this. So.
I'm sorry, I was crying over the fact that somebody had, Roxanne, do not. I was crying, I said, I need a minute. And I got up and I left, and I went and cried in the bathroom.
Excuse me, I'm not talking about that part. You did, and I get that, but then you came back.
Oh my gosh, wow, we're going here.
You came back at the end and said, I, I need to step away from this. And then I said, are we gonna have a follow-up meeting? And you said, I need to step away from this. Mr. Milano was there, the town clerk was there.
And Mr. Milano was supposed to ask the town moderator when he could meet, because we've now asked him twice and he has not been able to attend. And that was where we left it.
Okay, we are meeting during the daytime, and that might be part of the issue. But again, we are the select board-appointed group to do this. I don't want to sit and argue semantics with her, but I would like to say that I am committed to working on a product that will be a good product for the town. There are certain things that are very important. For instance, you know, the term, the terms, how people get on committees, the process. Those are very important things to understand, or how, if you're on a committee, what the expectation is, that you need to mostly be there, and if you can't be there, you know, you have to let the chair know. For instance, if you're gonna have a meeting as a committee, the chair has to make sure everybody has done all their paperwork ahead of time. And, so there are certain things that are very important in that document. I thought we should do a combination of documents. I thought there should be a two-page one, and there should be the handbook. I thought both would be good. And that's what I'm committed to doing. I know that, speaking with the town clerk that day, she was committed to that as well. And I believe that I could work with Ms. Bradley on it. So I don't like to have this feeling that there is a certain timetable instead of just trying to do a very good product. That's what I'm committed to.
Thank you.
Because the people in the town deserve that.
Absolutely, and I gave you full permission to cut what you needed to cut to make the two-page document, Roxanne. That is a fact. I said to you that it was edited, but you, you have not produced any work yet.
Okay, let's.
I'd like to, if I may?
Yes.
Okay. You had said that you had put something together to start with for us to look at, and that's what I said, fine. Otherwise, I'll pull together my own things, which I'm more than happy to.
Great, show me.
Right, I'm more than happy to.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not gonna get into this.
Right, and the chair's not gonna go in that direction. But what I heard is that we have two potential documents. And it would be appropriate for the committee to submit those two documents to the full board, for the full board's review.
They're not ready yet, that's the problem.
When they, right, and what, the next point, you're going right where I was headed, and that is to get an idea of when they might be ready. What would be a reasonable point in time for that?
What are you expecting to be ready, Mr. Chair? Do you expect the?
A draft of the two documents that were cited.
And are you expecting us to agree on both drafts?
Not necessarily, no.
Perfect, then my draft will be ready in one week.
Ms. Musto?
Herein lies the problem. We are a subcommittee.
Correct.
We are co-chairs. When you submit something, that is her individual document that she wants to put forward. That is not in the spirit of working together as co-chairs of a committee. That's not how a co-chair, that's not how a committee works. When you're a co-chair of a committee or you're on a committee, the committee works together to pro, to provide a document to go forward. If there are discrepancies between one member and another member, we outline what the discrepancies are between the two members, as to what one member might want and another. But at the whole, you work together. That's what I'm committed to doing. That's what you do as a co-chair. If you're gonna go forward, or another member's gonna go forward and put that forward, I don't understand why we have a committee, because that's not the democratic process. That's not how a committee works.
Let me back up just a moment, if I may, and that is to go back to the, the two documents. Let me back up just a moment, if I may, and that is, to go back to the two documents that would be forthcoming in draft to the select board as a whole. So, you have the author of one, per se, and just the primary author. Let's say it's a committee function. And you have the primary of another, is that a fair assumption? Lucy, you don't have to go legally in terms of what I'm talking about, but-
I guess what I would say with that is that the hope would be that we would have these two documents in front of us, and as committee co-chairs, we would work on these two documents to sit there and take ownership. I don't want to take ownership.
Yeah, that's not what I'm suggesting. A point of contact or a point within the committee of leadership or responsibility on the individual ones. But you will each have seen one another's.
Right.
And you can comment upon whether there are differences.
I have all of her red lines on mine, Mr. Chair. I can submit you the red lines and my draft version. Both of those are ready for you.
Okay, so, Roxanne, what would you have as a timeframe in mind for your-
So, I would like to see that we sit down again and that we see what we can come up with. I'm committed to doing that. To see what we can come up with for consensus. That's the way I operate, is I want to work together and get something done and accomplished. So, I don't know what Ms. Bradley feels on it.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to read anything that she proposed.
Okay.
So we should have another meeting or two?
So, as long as you propose something, yes, I'd be happy to go to that meeting. With her proposal.
We have a mutual understanding.
Yes, thank you.
Have this accomplished by the March 21st meeting of the select board?
Absolutely, for me.
What do you think, Roxanne?
I would like to be able to say that we're going to meet ahead of that to go over both proposals.
Of course, that would be necessary.
Are you going over the other proposal, Ms. Bradley?
Absolutely, you already have. I have all your red lines already, is there more changes for yours?
Well, I thought you, were you going to tidy it up a little bit?
That's for me to do for the draft. You're making your recommendations to mine, correct?
We already went through that, but were you going to go through it again?
We have gone through it now twice, Ms. Musto.
So, to meet a March 21, deliverable, we would have an opportunity for a meeting between now and then, that's a month's time.
Yeah.
Is it possible to extend it one more once, in case I cannot meet?
I would like not to do that, as my term as chair will have expired with the town election.
Well, we'll do our best, for sure.
And let me know if there's any difficulty beforehand, because-
Sure.
I'd like to move this along in such a way that we have this wrapped up by the conclusion of my term as chair, at the very latest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, we need to have this, our understanding is we'll have draft work products for the select board as a whole on March 21st. I do have some suggestions that have come to mind. And that is, that your products are the appropriate one. Note that unless otherwise, something to the effect that unless otherwise appointed by the select board that committee chairs, unless the chair is appointed by the select board, the committee will elect its chair. Just like we've seen in some of the committee work that we've discussed in the past. And also note the desirability of committees collaborating where appropriate with other committees. So that we can move a little bit away from disconnectedness.
All right, no more silos, I got you.
The more that we function as a whole, as a government entity, I think the better off for everybody. And I may have a couple of others, and if I do, I'll share them with both. But at this time, I want to ask Mr. Zulus if he has any comment on this.
Just one, thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I heard mention of a third document, a uniform application, and would that be part of the submission that we could consider as well?
For March 7th, that's right.
Yeah, I'd be happy, I'd be absolutely happy to submit that in draft form to the select board as well.
I'm sorry, I'm-
March 21st, I got you.
Right, March 21st. Ms. Musto?
The other thing to let people know is that people should still be applying for committees, that has not stopped. So, this is more of a technical issue in terms of getting a handbook. But this process of applying for committees is still, you know, in effect, there are still forms to do that, so people should know that.
Thank you very much. Let's move on at this particular point in time to item number eight, which is not unrelated. Discussion approval, board and committee appointments and appointment process. A open space and recreational planning committees. We have a recommendation from Winston Daley, Board of Parks Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to appointments, and Daley represented the Board of Parks Commissioners, the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee for a term to expire on January 30th, 2023.
One second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. And to the cultural council, Mr. Peter Perizzi.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to appoint Peter Perizzi to the Milton Cultural Council for a term to expire on January 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Moved and seconded, Ms. Musto?
I'm sorry, did I, I'm sorry, did I read it wrong, I apologize.
June 30th.
What did I say?
January.
Yeah.
Let me take another drink of water.
We've already passed.
Good catch, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could actually interrupt. I realized today that the cultural council actually has three-year terms as stipulated by Mass General laws, so that should be a three-year term rather than just to the end of this fiscal year, so I apologize for that oversight.
And so now I will ask a question, if it's okay with the chair.
Please.
Was there anybody else that applied for this?
So, the cultural council currently has five members. This is one of those committees that can have a minimum of five and up to 22, I think, is the limit in general laws for local cultural councils. They have been actively soliciting applications. They have a job description posted actually on the cultural council page on our website. They've been reaching out to their professional organizations. Mr. Perizzi is performing arts, the department chair at Milton Academy. And so they had been searching for folks to join actively. It is posted on our website as an opening on our boards and committees currently. So if other folks are interested, feel free to submit an application and the-
Wait, say that again, if other folks are interested, please submit an application.
Got you.
Yes. And I've spoken to Stephanie Trudel from the cultural council, who is excited to have Mr. Perizzi on board, and will, is happily to be searching for additional members of the cultural council.
So we have a clarification, it is June 30, we need to submit the year.
Yes, please.
Twenty, twenty-six.
So, if I may, so is it a minimum of three years?
It's a maximum of three years from date of appointment.
So, we can only appoint from now until-
Correct.
February-
Twenty-first.
February 21st, thank you.
Twenty-six.
So, I see. Mr. Chair, we have been trying to get our committees a little more uniform in terms of their appointment, appointments. I wonder if there's, if, you know, I was going to suggest if there's, if this is a vacancy, Mr. Milano, if there's a way to fill a vacancy for the remainder of a term. But this doesn't sound like it's a vacancy, it sounds like it's an additional position. And I do hesitate in this circumstance to wait. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to correct my slip and make a motion to appoint Peter Perizzi to the Milton Cultural Council for a term to expire on February 21st, 2026.
And I had seconded.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No discussion, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Everybody, and Mr. Milano for your input on this one. Now move to HC Equity and Justice for All Committee, Youth Task Force, Climate Action Planning Committee. We have appointments that we want to be making to all of these committees. We've been receiving a number of applications for each of them. We have various bodies within the town that will be making appointments to these, or some of these committees, such as the Climate Action Planning Committee. And what is your pleasure for moving forward on this? How would you like to proceed? Mr. Zulus?
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, as I noted earlier, the way we've been proceeding at the advice of Town Council for years, at least the years that I've been here, is that we either list all of the applicants on our agenda, or we delegate to a member of the board. If there are an excessive number of members, we delegate to a member of the board to come up with a slate. For example, back in 2020, we had about, we had more than 40 applicants for the Equity and Justice for All Committee. We delegated that to a member to come up with a slate rather than list the 40 names. That seemed to me to be an efficient and effective way to do it in that case. But I don't have a view one way or the other. I don't think we're in a position where we have an excessive number of applications for any of these committees. So, seems to me we find to put them on the agenda and discuss them and appoint them.
This is great, ultimately. Okay, I think we're all concurrence. We don't need a motion on this, we will just be moving forward for a future agenda accordingly. Item number nine, discussion approval, investment policy for a treaty. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you for this, please?
Sure, on behalf of the treasurer, we included the investment policy on tonight's agenda. There was one change in what had been adopted previously by the board in terms of its investment policy. That's towards the end, under section 2B, the control of how trust funds would be invested. In October of 2021, the Senate approved legislation that authorized the Town of Milton's treasurer to invest funds according to the prudent investor rule, which is a process and a rule stipulated in Mass General laws, rather than by using a legal list of approved investments that the state puts out on an annual basis. So that's the one significant change to the investment policy tonight. You know, happy to ask Treasurer McAuliffe to join us for a meeting or to answer any questions or bring any questions to him if anybody has any tonight.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a quick question.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't even know who to ask this question. But if we were to, so if things progress and the town votes to have the treasurer as an appointed or hired position, I hate that it's appointed, it should be a hired position, would that person have any say into this investment policy? Should they have any say in this?
So I think that would be something that we would anticipate engaging the future treasurer, elected, appointed, however, elected, appointed, hired.
Yeah.
However that kind of shakes out. You know, I certainly imagine that we'll revisit the investment policy once that person is on board.
Perfect, thank you.
For the time being, we did want to make that update in terms of the rules that govern trust funds and how the investor invests, the treasurer invests in them.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Do we need to have a motion on this to go to a second meeting? I didn't think so either, so we'll have this on the agenda for March 7th again. And is it the preference of any board members to have Mr. McAuliffe join us? Or seeing none, I think we're satisfied to move forward accordingly.
I just have a question.
Sure, please.
Just in terms of the distinction here, is it, we are now, we are now adopting the prudent investor rule for trust funds as opposed to the general funds and stabilization funds? Is that the distinction? Because we had adopted the prudent investor rule previously.
Correct, it's, the change was for trust funds specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you for the clarification. Item number 10, discussion approval, contract with Apex Companies LLC for a climate action plan. And we have a related motion, Mr. Milano, can we turn to you again, please?
Sure, if you'll recall, in the fall, or maybe towards the middle of winter, the town received a $50,000 grant from the Commonwealth for climate action planning efforts. Town staff, Josh Eckertley, Mary Patel, and Tim Zerwinski have been working on previous applications for grant funding to support the efforts to create a climate action plan that unfortunately weren't successful. But we were able to secure $50,000 to not do what I would call a full-blown climate action plan, but this will give us a good work product that can serve as the foundation for one going forward. Apex Companies, also known as Environmental Partners, submitted a quote that was accepted by the town for this work at 46, just about $46,000, which would be funded in full by the grant. And we will have engaged with them in a collaborative, in their, in a collaborative process to develop that framework of a climate action plan. And obviously, as we appoint the members to the Climate Action Planning Committee, they will have a consultant that's already ready to go and signed up and can start work pretty much immediately.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Milano? There is a proposed motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the contract with Apex Companies LLC for a climate action plan and authorize the town administrator to sign on the board's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto, moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Milano, again. Number 11, discussion approval, select board finance committee report, fiscal year 2024 budget update as well. Mr. Zulus, can we turn to you as the chair of the finance committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't believe there's any update since last week. We haven't met since, we are awaiting some additional work from the town administrator and the town departments, all the town departments. And so we hope to have, we expect to have something by next week. We have a meeting, I believe it's next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you, next Tuesday. Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. It's next Tuesday. And so, well, it's next week.
It's Monday or Tuesday.
We do have a meeting next week, and we expect to have some more feedback on a proposal on how to use free cash and, oh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
It's Monday.
It's Monday, all right. How to use free cash and how to come into balance at the, certainly at the level service level. And then perhaps with proposals, how to move forward on the needs-based budget as well. So, we expect to have that for a meeting on the 21st.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zulus. And Ms. Bradley.
I think, Ms. Bradley just mentioned to me that whether we want to mention that we do have what was referenced at our last meeting, and it's probably a good idea, and I apologize that I didn't include it, our last meeting wasn't televised. But what we referenced in the last meeting is that we do have certified free cash in the amount of $4.4 million. And so that is larger than normal, larger than has been, than the town has seen before. And so there are a lot of decisions to be made with respect to that. And so that's what we've asked the town administrator and the departments to do and to make a recommendation of.
Very important, thank you.
However, that $4.4 million is an anomaly. It's not something that we've seen in the past? Or do we expect to see that in the future?
Yes.
So it is an anomaly, it's like a unicorn, and we're very happy it's here in Milton. But we should not expect that in the year moving forward.
We have seen that in the past as well, so, very good underscoring. We know how things can go. Okay, thank you. Item number 12, discussion request for qualifications for INET Design Services reviewed by municipal broadband committee. And, Mr. Zulus, we turn to you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item, we're going to ask to defer because we have, we have four applicants, four that responded to the request for qualifications. The municipal broadband committee has reviewed the applications and decided to interview all four of the applicants. Two of the applicants were interviewed this morning. Two of the applicants will be interviewed next week. And we want to make sure that all the members had the applications. So if there are any questions or any feedback that the members have on the applications, I haven't seen those circulated, but hopefully they'll be circulated. And so, at the next meeting of this board, the municipal broadband committee, my expectation is we'll be making a recommendation with respect to the response to those RFQs.
Thank you, so we'll have this on the agenda for the March 7th meeting of the select board. Item number 13 is deferred, Mr. Milano? Item number 13 is deferred. Mr. Milano, did you want to make any comment?
I would request that we defer item 14 as well, please. I have been working but not producing anything on town administrative goals.
That's understandable.
I got to say though, as a side note, Mr. Milano, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. If you have feedback, I will take it. So thank you. And both sides.
Really? You've jumped right in with both feet and I just got to say, you're very knowledgeable about our town already and so I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Those comments are appreciated. And I was actually asking if you had any further comment on item number 13.
Oh, sorry. One to merit.
Not at all.
Taking the gold star back. 13 is?
This is the Milton Auto Appeal.
Yes, deferred.
Just so that everybody on the board understands the history on this one.
This address had a special permit from the Board of Appeals that would allow auto sales at that location that had lapsed. So before the select board can take up a license application, they do need to re-secure that special permit if it will be approved by the Board of Appeals. So they have to act first before the select board can. And we spoke with the property, with the business owner today to let him know and he'll be working on that application to the Board of Appeals.
Ms. Bradley.
Can you tell me where this business is?
This is right at the corner of Canton Ave. and Blue Hills, the gas station right there that has auto sales located within it.
So I, I'm probably the worst elected official on the planet. I have no idea what street names are. Are you talking about Blue Hills Ave. and like SNE Auto? Like that's like by the Milton Food Pantry?
No, Blue Hill Parkway, sorry. Right across from the Beverly Playgrounds, if that, where that is going.
Yes. Got you. Thank you so much.
At Equity Road, Canton Avenue?
Yep. I just need landmarks.
Sure.
That's okay. And I'll just go back to item number 14 for just a moment to say that Mr. Milano and I keep in continuous discussion on his goals and everything is just where we want it to be. Item number 15, Discussion Approval One-Day Local License Applications, Milton Arts Center, 334 Edgehill Road. Mr. Milano, you're on the hook again.
Sure, thanks. Just the one-day applications from the Arts Center for these events. They, we had deferred this previously because we thought perhaps they would be using a cater and would not need a one-day license. But in this case, they will. And so we're requesting action tonight for the events as listed on the agenda.
I'll take the liberty of helping out by reading the motion, Move to Approve the One-Day Local License Applications for the Milton Arts Center located at 334 Edgehill Road on the following dates, February 25, 2023, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. comedy show, March 3, 2023, 6:00 p.m., 9:00 p.m., First Friday Artist Reception. April 7, 2023, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., First Friday Musicians at the Milton Arts Center. April 28, 2023, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. comedy show at the Milton Arts Center. May 5, 2023, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., First Friday Artist Reception. May 6, 2023, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Spring Renewal Art Auction Fundraiser. Does somebody move accordingly?
She'll move.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item number 16 is Discussion Approval of 2022 Annual Report Submission of the Select Board. I think everybody has seen that. Compliments to former chair Katie Conlin for what I thought was a masterful job. I had an inquiry from her about a clarification that might be needed with respect to the proposed Gull Road swap. And I think that's something, in fact, I don't think, I think it's something Town Council should take a look at. And I've reported it to Town Council for that purpose. And we have sort of a dropping off the cliff, in a manner of speaking, the commentary reporting on the very good selection process for a town administrator and maybe adding a notation to the effect that the town administrator was appointed subsequent to the date by which that report was reporting on. So if it would make sense, I would suggest moving to approve, we could do two things. We could defer this for another meeting altogether, or we could approve it subject to appropriate modifications to the content submitted.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would ask you to defer it. I may have a few tweaks, suggested tweaks as well. If there's no downside to waiting until the next meeting. And perhaps it could be one of Mr. Milano's goals to.
None here. Agreeable to other members of the board?
Of course.
Your wish is our command, Mrs. Zulus.
Thank you. Thank you for the fruit lozenges.
You're very welcome. You can tell I've been down that road.
Yes.
It's not an enjoyable highway. Discussion Approval, item number 17, Meeting Minutes, January 3, 2023, January 10, 2023, January 18, 2023, January 24, 2023. The board will note that its review showed no substantive changes. Did anybody else have a comment that they wish to make in those minutes? Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points. I believe in the, in January 18 minutes on page eight, where I talked about the report of the, pardon me, report of the Finance Committee, talked about an approximately $4.3 million deficit. I think that was 3.4 million dollars.
I believe that's correct.
So I, so we want to make that change. And then the only other thought, it was on the January 24 minutes, refers to Mr. Donahue's public comment. It said, "Mr. Donahue encouraged the board to safeguard the property." Not quite sure that that's the word that was used, to safeguard the property. My understanding is that he wanted to, he was proposing to support using that property for school purposes. But perhaps we could just check that to see what's accurate on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. I'm glad to mention that I made a similar notation, but didn't follow up on it. Okay, with those notations, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 3, 2023, January 10, 2023, January 18, 2023, and January 24, 2023, with those minor changes.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimously adopted. Number 18 on the agenda, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Milano, anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Sure. A few things. Unfortunately, our Assistant Health Director, Laura Delacai, has accepted a new position as the Health Director in the city of Beverly. So a great step up for her, but.
And a long drive.
Yes, partly. She's on the wrong shore at the moment. But it's a great opportunity for her. Laura joined as the Health Agent, progressed to the Assistant Health Director. We're always happy to see folks who grow into bigger roles. And I know, Ms. Musto, she worked closely with you on board, the Board of Health. So sad to see her go. The position is being advertised as we speak, but we wish Laura all the best in her new role. I don't know if you had, if I missed anything on her.
I just wanted to say that she did a fantastic job and a lot of people in the community always remarked at how favorable she was and easy to work with and a lot of energy. And they really, you know, are going to miss her. A lot of people have already said that. So thank her for her work.
I'd just like to add, Mr. Milano, that I had an opportunity to work with her during the COVID pandemic, being one of the volunteers that she had recruited to service the community as inoculations were being made available. And she was just an outstanding leader. And I don't want to say manager, but facilitator, accommodator, and healthcare provider.
If I may add, I believe she made some very persuasive presentations on the ARPA funding. I remember, I remember she made a very, very good presentation before our board on the needs for the Health Department, the ARPA funding.
She did a terrific job, so she'll be missed for sure.
Congratulations to the town of Beverly.
It's funny, Laura and I, she had worked and she had interned in Marlboro and started there just shortly after I had left. So we'd almost quite, not quite, but almost crossed paths twice in our careers. Tim Minassio, the Town Civil Engineer, has also stepped down, so that position has also been posted, as has our IT assistant position, which is the other position in our IT office with the IT director. So anybody looking to start a municipal career in information technology or as a civil engineer, please visit the town's website and submit an application. We'll be happy to look at the application and interview and hire. So please do apply. As was discussed previously, we do have some board and committee openings listed on the website. That said, if folks are interested in any other board or committee that's not listed as having an opening, we're happy to chat if there are any questions about any of those. Good to see everybody at the special town meeting on Monday last week, not too long, which I think made some folks happy. Tim Zerwinski and Josh Eckert Lee from the Planning Department hosted a public information session on MBTA communities on Thursday night. That session was recorded. If you missed it, if it's not up already, I'm sure it'll be up soon on the Milton Access YouTube page. A lot of information was shared, a lot of comments and questions from the audience. And I know that Josh and Tim are working on a frequently asked questions page. There's a lot of information on the town's website about the MBTA communities zoning requirements. So if you have any questions, want to provide any comments, please reach out to Tim. Josh, directly to myself, will consolidate those comments and questions centrally.
There was over 100 people on that.
Yes, it was very well attended.
It was really, yeah, there was over 100, 100 of our residents on that Zoom. So it was really well received and many people in the community are talking about it. So kudos to all those that put that on.
I agree. And they did a good job of getting the news out there because we need to start getting the information out so people can learn about it and formulate what their viewpoint will be on this. Last week, I did attend the Norfolk County Managers Regional Meeting, just a regular monthly meeting that we have. This one was in Medway. And then lastly, as I mentioned, Milton Access TV is transitioning over everything to YouTube. So if you're looking for things, try their YouTube page. It's very user-friendly. And I've lucked out in finding a number of videos I've been chasing over there. Well done to them on transitioning over to that. And, Mr. Chair, I just, oh, one last thing. We did appoint, Chief King has appointed a clinician. Michelle Bishop started this week full-time as the town's mental health clinician at the police department. She had been previously working with the department as, through the jail diversion program that they had received grant funding for. So that is an ARPA-funded position for the police department. So we're happy to be able to fill that position. And, Mr. Chair, I believe that is everything I had.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Any questions for Mr. Milano? The chair's report will be very succinct and it will be deferred until March 7, the select board meeting. We have no public comment response for this evening, needless to say. And item number 21 is our future meeting dates. March 7 is mentioned earlier, March 21, and then, it's hard to believe, April 4. So we'll calendar those, everyone. And at this time, we will move into executive session. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21, Subsections A, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation against the Massachusetts Patriots and Authority regarding the condition of the stairs located at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. And I'll read the motion, which is essentially what was just cast, I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Patriots and Authority MBTA related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. Based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. The select board will adjourn from the executive session and not return to open session. Is there a second to the motion? That's read.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. This will be by roll call. Ms. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle? Yes, thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
So at this time, we will cease the recording?
Yes, I'll, well.
Well, we got to tell them.